But anyways, I don't think that's uh that homeowner is aware that that is, he's not disputing that one. He'd rather not spend the money to remove it right now if we're all right with it. I said, this parcel here would be to put uh road in. So that we could access the big lot in the back. So I don't know if that's an issue. I didn't think it would be, but it's up to you. If we ever sold it naturally, then you would have to move the thing and get rid of it.
If I'm looking at this correctly, we actually own property.
You own this whole thing right here, this whole.
Yeah, but up here closer to twenty-two B.
Yeah.
Salmon River, we actually own across the river or something.
Yeah, yeah. And then it cuts back across on our side, right almost to the bank on our side, it towards the back.
You can get better sight than I do.
I can't really.
Yeah, matter of fact, where this comes down right here, you know, and this mapping is as good as looking at it on a computer. But he's even got the fireplaces in there. As you go down this road, right here, I'll point them out to you because I know where they are. These are actually the fireplaces right here.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You see those three right there?
Three together.
Those are the ones that Mike Snyder put in during the job course when he was a kid. They got everything on here marked out pretty well. I don't think Heather will have a problem with this. They are gonna drive pins in here as soon as we tell them what we want done. If we want the hard pins drove in, how many, just the corners, or you know, if we wanted more pins than that. But if you see the little round areas, you'll see that those are where they got the wooden stakes right now. They will pin those areas for us with metal.
Who will?
Several ones.
Okay.
And then they wanna know how many maps. So if you look at the email at the beginning, it says, see the attached survey map submitted for your review and let me know if you have any questions. We set all pins as depicted on the attached mapping. Please note that the fencing around Tag Fire, which comes leaning on ours, and then again, it shows that little shed on the other tax map parcel. Encroaches entirely, that one pretty much entirely on land, so Scott Paul, let's talk to that guy. He said he'll move it if he really has to. Let me know the number of copies needed. So it looks like this latest email, they have all the pins in place, not just the wooden stakes. So I don't know how many maps you want. I would suggest we get probably, as long as he's doing it and they're cheaper than going back to him to get them out there. Probably a minimum of two sets, but maybe three that way. If we indeed do lease this land out for either the possible campsite or the senior housing. And they will need a map as their layout and that would give us two for, one for the saves and one for our code enforcement officers, maps and hang along with town properties. So I would say three. I don't know, what do you think?
Sure, three.
I think four.
You are four?
That way we got one to work with.
Oh, I see what you're saying. One that, well. I don't know if you can make enough, but alright.
Just curious, Kevin, will they be capping the pins? They put their surveyor hat on.
Yeah. They usually put, I mean, usually the surveying pins, if they're not just a pin pin.
Yes.
Do have the caps on with the lines to latitude on the top of that and the numbers. I will verify that with him because he didn't say that, he just said that they're done. I'll check that out with him. That's a good question. He left the aluminum ones on the top. So I gave him an email already thanking him. I never thought they would do that that fast. They were only approved that couple of weeks ago. Um, this is a whole bunch of crap. I'm not gonna go through all this tonight and we'll be here forever, but um, it's already getting late. Basically, I do wanna explain it, the best that was explained to me. And they're willing to come out here and explain this to the board. So basically, uh, Jordian is a company that works for the Town of Greece. Okay? And they approached the Town of Greece. I said, how do we get in on this? Because this is a really good deal for the Town of Greece, I'll tell you that. But basically, um, you guys have all heard of piggybacking before? Instead of going off a state contract, if you can find an existing state contract that another town or municipality has used, then you can piggyback off of that contract. So basically, that's what they do. Now, I've heard of that, like I told him, for like equipment, fire trucks and, you know, wild trucks and stuff like that, but I was like, could you do that for our water projects? You know what I mean? The two water projects we're coming up with are the three, if they all go through. And he goes, you can do this for any of us. And I asked, I said, well, doesn't the town itself have to actually have done that project then so that you can piggyback off of it? And he goes, no, we've been through the state comptroller's office. He goes, we have an agreement that we piggyback off of their resources. And I said, how does that work? He goes, well, he goes, they actually get uh one percent of whatever the cost is that goes back to the Town of Greece. And then Jordian gets five percent fee for doing this. So I could have them work up estimates on what it would cost them to put the bid out for these projects and all that stuff. So it's kinda cool. He goes, we have did some big projects like that, you know, like I told him, the big one was eight point one. He goes, but normally we try to keep in the small ones that you're doing like that, you know, hundred seventy-five to a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollar range. He goes, the smaller ones. And what it does is it streamlines the whole thing because again, you're you're dealing with one person to do the whole works. Here, they gave me a couple of different bids. And they said, can you send me something on what you did? Proposal. So I'll send those out way. This is basically what they do. And the big, very big folder is basically all the contracts if we were to do that with them. I don't wanna do that tonight because there's more than I wanna. But if it's something that you think, I thought it was kinda cool. It streamlines the bidding process because there is no bidding process, so that is piggyback off of exactly what they have already done on other projects for other towns. And then they have, you'll be happy about this, they have contractors they use in your area. They utilize, depending on what area you're in, because they do this all over the state. But they use contractors from where they're the closest ones that are in their system. So it was kinda cool, something to look at, something to think about. There's nothing that we're putting out right now that we would need to do this for and how we get to like uh Ritz Nav or Mason Lane or those, those are the kinda projects that he goes, I don't mind working on the big one. It's just a lot more work for us for what we make out of it. They get, don't get me wrong, it's five percent of whatever the big capital is, but those big ones, it's a lot. Anyways, um, you interested in this? Or you want me to file thirteen it? Thought it was kinda cool. We, I can keep this in a folder and then we could reach out to them and see what they come up with for proposals.
I think I would at least talk to them about it. I mean, it sounds like it's.
Like, give a proposal, just let me look it over and see.
Nah, they'll give us just like this, you know what I mean? That's what I wanted to see. I said, if you can't because of confidentiality, I understand, but uh he goes, you can call these people. You can see, these are, these are not little towns. These are, these are real big towns that haven't used them. So it looks pretty cool. Are you uh, are you good with that? You got that?
Yep, I'm good with it.
Did you give me your one that's through over to you, Doc? What happened to that? No, send, no sending that off. It would look like.
Oh, this right here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. Oh, you need it back.
Oh, I'm just gonna put it in a folder, but you're, I'll give you this whole thing if you're gonna look it over. You just give it back to me at the meeting. But um, I think it was kinda cool. Like I say, they say it's gonna save a ton of money because you're not paying through different people, but they're doing that out. And it's, they're backing off of. Did you wanna look it over before, I mean? We're not gonna do a resolution right away, we're just.
Yeah, you mean like I'll take it home with me and.
Yeah, and just give it back to me or anybody else that wants to look at it.
I think it's great.
But like I say, I read the big, there's a lot in there.
Okay, I'd like, I'll get it back up to you.
So basically, uh, piggybacking off of construction, uh, they do renovations. I talked to him about the salt shed project. He goes, we did tons of them. And you can piggyback right off of that. All your work is done. All engineering is done. Project, um they call for the actual work to be done. I mean, they got it all, they just pull out their folder and here you go. If you go with this one, you know what I mean? So it saves you money in the long run because you're not paying everybody else to do it. They're like full service for everyone. So the other thing I did ask him, I said, the Town of Greece gets one percent. I said, that's a win-win for them. Imagine how many projects that, well, even one percent of a million dollars, you know, if there's several that year. I said, is there any way we can get involved with this? Not that I'm looking for more work, but it's more money for the town. He goes, absolutely. He goes, if something were to fall through with them and they didn't wanna do it anymore? Or he goes, um, we expand enough where we need another town. He goes, I've never had anybody ask that question, but he goes, I would be more happy to, you know, give you the paperwork and send you a contract and we could start doing the same thing as they're doing. It's, it's true money, you know what I mean? It's pretty cool. No cost to get a quote, which is cool, so you're not paying any money upfront for the quote. They, they hit their budget eighty-five to ninety percent of the time. So whatever they quote you, that's, that's what their, their thing is, eighty-five to ninety percent of what they quote you. Eighty, ninety, eighty-five, ninety percent of the time, whatever it is. Uh, they provide the payroll. Uh, Town of Greece again gets one percent. Average is, he goes between two hundred and three hundred thousand, that's where they like to keep the projects. But he goes, if you want us to do an eight point one, we do it, but we don't make any money. Too much involved with that, but that's why they like to keep it. Uh, they've been doing this since uh, two thousand fifteen. And that's their, he goes, you call the comptroller, New York State comptroller's office? He goes, I, I hope you do and verify that we are all set with them and that uh, they're good with what we're doing. It sounded pretty legit for a forty minute phone call in my day. It was kinda cool. Another avenue for us. Uh, okay, um, the zoning advisory committee has been meeting and Howard did a little explanation of what you're doing. And then I would like to bring up to a resolution or motion to the, uh, on the twenty-seventh at our meeting to have and hold a public input meeting. So if you wanna, I don't know if you wanna give a little dissertation about what you've been working on or how you're making out or how you're doing with zoning?
It's uh, it's going real good. We've been looking at a lot of stuff and getting a lot of information in. But what we discussed at the last meeting is we'd like to have a public meeting advertised and talk it over. We're thinking the best way to do is probably have the town board call for the public meeting to meet with the zoning advisory committee, meet the zoning advisory committee so we get basically um.
Some input from the rest of the residents.
Yeah, we're looking for constructive input to assist in the update, so.
So basically, um they have agreed that uh, Wednesday may fourth would be good for them to do this. Um, I would put it in a form of a motion or a resolution on our meeting, uh, calling for this. And then that one would be an open meeting for the public. Everybody good with that one? I'll have uh, John do a resolution for that one.
Uh, yeah, I got some comments about that after, counseling time.
Um, the update on the web, he switched everything over on Thursday night. Uh, so FYI, the website will have some period when it is down overnight, Thursday. This happens as the new pointer to the site propagates to all the servers on the internet. So Friday, not only will we get the agenda posted, but uh, we will be on the new site. So we have the new site up and running and we're gonna do training. He actually got sick right now, so he was supposed to be here this week, but he goes, if I don't, it's not COVID, but he goes, I'm under the weather, so I don't wanna give it to anybody. So if that happens to me next week, we'll get everybody in on that. So they know how to navigate the website and use it themselves. Remember, he will do five updates a month for us anyhow, but um, especially like for codes and Sam at the rec department for all his applications, they can do it all online. That's that. Uh, just an update on the insurance. Uh, we're in a, geez, in the final stages of all this crap, but this is uh, the annual update. I did update a few of the properties, just to let you guys know. I went up and seen Mike up at the highway garage and we added some of the equipment that wasn't on there. Basically, everything that went on the road, they sort of the grade all was on there, we added the grade all on there too. Uh, could they drive that down the road? And then um, the new tractor I put on because if something happened to that, we want the coverage on it. And I wanted to know your thoughts on like the front end loaders and stuff like that. We can add those on if we're not required to, but I could check and see how much it would be to add those on.
Do we have special commercial plates on those?
There's nothing on them.
Nothing on them?
They're not registered. The sweeper is on, both the sweepers are on there. Anything that usually goes down the road, don't get me wrong, front loaders go down the road to get from A to Z sometimes, but basically anything that, all of the regular trucks are on there. But it would, I wouldn't put it on insurance like you're registering them, which we don't have anyway. So then we get the free plates if I go down there like I did for the trailer and we'll register them as a municipal plate. But uh, it would just cover it for damage.
Yeah, they use those in the road to work, right?
Yeah, they do.
I mean, if we run it to pedestrian.
Well, they bring them down here to do the parking lot or to take the snow from the banks around here. It would just, like I say, it's covered, we have on our big umbrella policy, it'd be covered if somebody hit them or they hit somebody. But we don't have the coverage of the machine that totaled, so to speak.
How much would it be, do you know?
That's what I'm saying. I see, most of this stuff has been.
What about like copper wire burned down, burned up or something?
Exactly, that's it, you know?
I mean, that happens all the time.
They're comprehensive.
Yeah.
Glass covers break. I don't know if we wanna get into glass breakage, but you know, if the thing got burned out, the total, they're wrecked somehow and then rolled over or what have you, it might be interesting to see how much more it costs to get those other pieces. There's only like three pieces left down that weren't on there, other than the new tractor, which I did add on already and the dump truck.
Yeah.
What's that?
Full of sleep, I think.
Oh, I got a melton voice. But anyways, so if you're interested in that, and we're almost to the end. After paperwork back and forth and back and forth for the last two, three and a half weeks on this uh, stuff covers, getting it for twenty-five thousand, a quarter million dollars for draws. Uh, we're just about there. The final stuff was submitted the end of last week. So we should be handing something to them shortly and get the new policy. It never ends. Alright, um, my last thing for the night, I promise you. Okay, two things left. Alright.
Two.
You have, sorry, I forgot that note. That one's a quick one. We talked about hiring some employees. We're gonna have to hire more than what I even thought of. So this is for the hire of four employees. First of all, like I said earlier, a few months back, I'd like to hire uh, two additional part-time employees. Uh, one seasonal part-time for the summer projects, cleanup of the sidewalks and painting of the hydrants, help mowing and weed trimming and other duties as assigned. So that would be strictly for the summer months like we do, we do right now with um, some help that Sam has. Uh, the other one would be uh, part-time year-round. Some duties during the summer, as mentioned above, winter projects, uh, they could help with the winter duties like snow removal, the ice skating rink setup for the Christmas carnival and um, other duties as assigned too. If we go and decide to take care of the sidewalks, that person can actually be available to do that also throughout the winter. So um, I would at least like to get, I'll do a resolution for the twenty-seventh, put a, add in the paper. I'd at least like to get two, these two put on um, for the, the summer. Again, they'll be part-time that way. They're not forty-hour weeks, you know what I mean? Quote me, but with the twenty-seven, I think, we gotta stay on for part timers, the number one, twenty-seven. Accumulative over the year. So they could work forty hours one week, but as long as their hours don't equal over that twenty, say, full-on quote, twenty-seven hours a week for the whole year, we can keep them as part timers for civil service.
Are these the kids that we normally hire this year?
Well, you're not, these two, I, we could do it. I wouldn't hire like a sixteen-year-old, but um, yeah, some younger kids would be great with this, so it's an energy and some.
Is this the ones, each year Sam hired, puts on some help? Is this, would this be the same thing you're talking about in addition?
Well, the seasonal would be, for the summer season, could be somebody like that. The one for part-time all year long.
Is that Jimmy or Gosman, Dave Gosman?
Well, it'd kind of, it'd be like a helper to the buildings and grounds.
Yes, in addition. Yeah, these two are, are over and above what Sam usually gets in trying to find somebody to replace it.
Absolutely.
Those are two new employees.
Yeah, because we got, we got, we talked about sidewalks that need to be fixed. And with Sam and everything he's got going on, Sam keeps on saying he'll help and don't worry about it and that, but he'll kill himself. I know he won't, you know what I mean? Just to try to get it done. And he only makes ten grand a year to do what he's doing now and he plowing for free all, you know, because he likes to plow, so. But you, basically, am I gonna ask him to go around and paint fire hydrants and stuff like that? And all that stuff needs to be done. All that brush that's around them that you can't get to anymore is the town's responsibility and not the fire department's responsibility.
This would be under Sam's guidance?
I would, I would, I would say that the, the summer seasonal would be, and I put that in there, would be utilized where needed as assigned. Uh, basically, I would still like to, they could work all summer long on the sidewalks and probably not get everything caught up. Okay, until we get things where we need them. I would say that he or she could help out us this summer um, with both of those duties as needed, you know? If they're, if we get a lot of rain and they need a lot of mowing and we trim it.
Who's gonna be a supervisor for them?
I mean, if they, we don't get fifteen, sixteen. So that, okay, so I would, I would put these two, and I talked to Sam about it, um, because they, they've worked so close together even with the highway department. I would put these under buildings and grounds. And that way, slash utilized as needed for the, the, uh, Sam at the rec department. That's why I say other duties as assigned.
And he would be assigning the work for each day? And he's responsible for tiny cars?
I mean, just to go around and take care of cutting back the, the brush and the stuff around the hydrants and taking care of those and getting them painted. But we have, half the summer getting that done. And then you still have the sidewalks and all that, so um, what I would suggest is that we started on the sidewalk, the sidewalks and the, say, the hydrants and specific areas. Say, okay, we're gonna, this summer, we wanna clean up these and we wanna get these, this bunch of sidewalks done. And then if, we'll put it on like a five-year rotation after that. So that after the end of five years, they go right back and they start.
You're saying get the sidewalks done?
Yeah.
You're not talking about if we have a bad sidewalk, actually getting it tore up and pouring some mat and.
So basically, they're gonna need to edge them and cut them back and get the brush out of them, okay? Um, as far as redoing a sidewalk, the town has the forms. George has them still up there from when he was obviously pretending, because they used to do it for the town. I'd have to coordinate with uh, Mike Snyder to see if a couple of his guys have time to help to get a section done at a time. I don't mind helping either.
Yeah, because you put a pour in some mat, you gotta be.
No, you, you definitely aren't gonna want a sixteen-year-old kid to do that. I wouldn't do that because it'd be a waste of our, our money. Uh, because first of all, would they even have their reports in that? You know what I mean? So, but you know as well as I do that as long as we have somebody there to level the forms, set them, get everything cleaned out nice and square. And um, with these, you don't need, you know, other than setting up the line, the cement, um, with uh, cement string and uh, the belt, getting the forms leveled. Actually, you're gonna pitch one side about a half an inch of the water, don't stay out in the freeze. But um, if you had a couple of guys that could just help you do that, you need laborers more than you need somebody to run the job. We could look at, after trying it, uh, we could look at hiring it out, but you're gonna pay prevailing wages and these are gonna go up probably seventy-five percent in cost of materials.
I just don't foresee any kid or if we get to do a lot of cement work. I hate to say it, you don't have the time. You can say it forever that you can help them, but you're tied up now nine hours a day in there in a, for, or day job.
But, but I, I, I put this out to you, okay? Drive around the sidewalks, because I, Sherman told me the same thing. And we did, we drove around every street in Morrisonville. And the only sidewalk that I've seen that was even on level was in our front that was in front of the fuzzy duck, old fuzzy duck parking lot. And that one's raised about maybe an inch and a half, two inches. So that one, all I would do is bring the forms up on each side of it. Drill in, put a few pieces of rebar in there to catch the top part of the cement. And I just pour another couple inches on top. We could flip that out of there. With even that little tractor, we could flip that out. It's only a section that's made from here to there. And you replace that apron going down if you even need it anymore because the bar's no longer there. So it's just between the driveway entrance going in. That was the only piece of cement that I've seen that was uneven. There are areas that have been cracked over the years from the frost, but are not broken apart. I mean, there's just.
So they're in pretty good shape?
And that's what Sherman says. He goes, you're right, Kevin. He goes, I never would have believed it. I said, what you see going down the road, the problem is they're not edged, they're not squared off and they're not maintained. But the structure of the sidewalks themselves, believe it or not, are in really good shape. And they're old, but it's cement, you know what I mean? So they're, they're a monolithic slide, they, they float and they're all pretty.
Turn that over to. Did we? For this year. That mountain was turned over for this year, right?
The sidewalks? Yeah. Yeah, but that's something that we can always go, and that's what I, I just find everybody, I said, the easiest way to do that, to to get it done while the price was still there for the dump truck or the uh, tractor before it had increases. It was to use that, but we can always do a item transfer.
Next thing, it's trying to help. We can post that and we can put it out there. But they can't get people to go flip a hamburger at McDonald's for seventeen dollars an hour. What are we gonna, we probably ain't gonna get.
But we don't know if they'll put it out there. So that's what I'd like to do is put it out there if the board's good with that, see. That's what I'd like to do is put it out there. If the board's good with that, see if we got any interest. Um. I would say that, you know, for the most part, we can start these people out, what we're doing with the, the summer help. Other than, um, you quote me or not quote me, but for the, the part-time. Year round, about when you might want to give them something that you're gonna interest somebody that's maybe. Twenty-eight, thirty years old and.
So we gotta replace Danny also, right?
We still need to replace Danny. That's on here too. I, I got four fires. So, and there's more than that. But I just want to make sure you're good because what I'll do is I'll have a resolution done up for the twenty-seven. If you guys are good with it. If not, I'm not gonna waste downtime or my time and we'll just.
I think the idea. Of having inexperienced people. Installing sidewalks when in reality, what you really need is an engineered plan for one. Number one, you need to establish the elevation of the sidewalk in reference to the road. And I don't think that we can get anyone to do this in this current job market. And I think the liability on the town is tremendous. They even consider doing that.
That's still only one, one little tiny part of what I'm asking for. We still need the help to edge them, to get the sod out of them.
Just making reference to the sidewalk construction. The construction of it.
The construction, the elevation of the sidewalks in conjunction with the road are already there. They were installed and they're already there. If we had a section that needs to be replaced, like I said, that small ramp. I don't think we need to hire an engineer to do a ramp off the end of a, a sidewalk that's three or four foot long. Um, if we were taking out thirty, forty feet of sidewalk.
Kevin, it's, hey, it's just everyone's got different opinions.
No, I'm just saying, if we're taking out, you know, and rebuilding the whole section of sidewalk, then that, that may be, but I don't think so. I think that if we end up replacing pieces of sidewalk, I think you're talking about. You know, even if you were worried about the ones that were cracked, which really don't mean anything. Because you could pour a slide.
Not gonna get that far this year.
Yeah, no, you're never gonna get it that far. Just cleaning them up.
You gotta get them cleaned first.
We're not gonna do it with the help we got here, is what I'm telling you. It'll, it'll just sit there and everybody's got good intentions. But it won't go nowhere since we don't have the help and we're not broke.
First thing I would do, I mean, I'm all for it, but I just don't think you're gonna get help. I hate to say it. I don't think you're gonna get anybody to volunteer. I don't think you're gonna get any help.
Put it out there and find out.
Yes, I agree with you. Putting it out there, but I don't think we're gonna get any help.
Yeah, it's. Or we, we hire somebody to do all the sidewalk edging and, and. But we got everything we need to do it now. Sam last year got a brand new edging machine. They can run right down the sidewalk, cut it all out. And those two guys, Sam will run the tractor. But the, the two people, girls or guys, all they have to do is throw the sod, they, they cut it off, scrape it off the sidewalk, throw in a bucket and. Sam has to dump in the dump truck. It's not rocket science.
I, I'm agree with you to put it out there. We don't have to keep.
We can't keep our filing work on the workers we got and, and expect them to still maintain everything we got going on.
Next thing, uh, you gotta set a price. What are we gonna pay? We got, we can't just say. Approximately.
No, that's why I said.
Set a price.